I'm going to call the meeting to order. Just as a reminder to everybody, if you'd like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the clerk prior to the item being presented. Roll call?
Councilmember Plot?
Here.
Councilmember Rigby?
Here.
Councilmember Rush?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lormore?
Here.
Mayor Tesari?
Here. Tonight's invocation will be presented by Father Patrick Kirsch of Blessed Father Romero Catholic Church. Is he here? We have a volunteer? All right. All right. Todd, Councilmember Rigby?
Do you need to stand up? You can do it from over there. Our dear Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity we have to gather together as a community and to discuss the needs of our community. Father, we ask that we may be led and directed to say and do those things to help continue to better our community. Father, we are grateful for our residents that come out and to, for their support and for their input. We ask that a special blessing be upon our first responders in our area, that they may be protected in all that they do, that they may be watched over, and they may be able to return home to their families. We are grateful for them and for their service. Father, we ask for thy help in all that we do, and that when the time comes, we may all travel home in safety. And we ask for these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Rigby. Our new addition, Oscar, our student liaison, is going to lead us in the pledge.
My pledge to lead this student body of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. We're going to move on to item three. And the California Department of Education created a Gold Ribbon Schools Award to honor public schools while the California Distinguished Schools Program was on hiatus as California continued its transition to the new assessment and accountability systems. Criteria include academic improvement in math and English, language arts, test scores, and schools were also evaluated on their implementation of programs and curriculum that prepare students for college and beyond. A total of 477 middle schools and high schools applied this year, and of those 477, three Eastville schools were selected. Congratulations. So, it's a congratulations to Eleanor Roosevelt High School, the recipient of the Gold Ribbon Award in 2016, and to River Heights Intermediate School and Dr. Augustine Ramirez Intermediate School, who were recipients of the award in 2017. So, I'd like to invite our representatives from the district up to the podium. And the council.
Well, obviously, our city has a lot of great things, great attributes that we can herald to the general public and our surrounding communities, but one of the best that we possess is obviously our schools. And these awards that you've received are indicative of the hard work that you guys put into teaching our kids. We couldn't ask for better people to send our kids to you. So, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Dr. Lawrence.
Thank you. Our school, Eleanor Roosevelt High School, received the Gold Ribbon Award for our transition ninth grade program, which is to help our ninth grade students transition from middle school to high school, and that's implementing a course called Success for High School, as well as link crew and some mentorship for our students. So, we are very thankful for the success of that program. But also, we're very thankful for the City of Eastville for your continued support in everything we do, from our, you know, basketball, you know, victory parade, to graduation and the help with traffic and just everything that we do. We really could not have done without the support from the City of Eastville. So, thank you very much.
At Ramirez, we actually wrote our Gold Ribbon Award for some of the systems that we have in place to make sure students get their work completed, as well as the writing that's been implemented across all the curriculums. So, if you have a student at Ramirez Intermediate, they will be writing even a P E, right? There's a few characters. And same as Kim, we really appreciate all the support. I've worked actually as an administrator at Eastville for 10 years, and there's nothing like the support of the Eastville City School, for other schools in Eastville. We really appreciate all that you do for us. For River Heights, that goes our thanks to the City of Eastville, the council has been amazing. Special thank you to councilmember Mr. Plot, who actually got to be a part of our writing team when we were writing our application. River Heights wrote our application based on our P P I S Positive Behavior and Intervention and Support Program that has really been instrumental in our school culture and really promoting the positive and celebrating the good things that kids are doing. And the end result was transferred over to Aggie and Success too. So, we're proud of our kids, and again, we couldn't go without the assistance and support of our city, and it's just, we'll probably be a part of your great city.
Well, it's one of the amazing things about our community is the great working relationship that we have with our agencies and so on. On behalf of the city, we'd like to recognize you guys and your students. Thank you, guys. Very good. Congratulations.
All right. Oscar Zuniga, student liaison report.
Thank you. Good evening. Ronald Reagan Elementary is having their end of the year awards assembly honoring their students on Wednesday, June 21st. Their sixth grade promotion ceremony will occur on Thursday, June 22nd, right before the sixth grade versus softball, versus staff softball game that will take place on Friday, June 23rd. As for the upcoming dates of June 26th through the 30th, there will be no school for the students. July 6th marks the first day back for teachers. Tracks A, C, and D will begin a new school year July 11th. Eastville Elementary will be hosting their end of the year awards for all tracks, kinder promotion for all tracks, and their sixth grade promotion through the week of June 19th through the 23rd. The school year of 2016 through the 2017 will end with a minimum day for all students. Students will begin the school year of 2017 through the 2018, 2018 on Tuesday, July 11th. River Heights Intermediate is currently on summer break, but they look forward to welcoming their incoming seventh grade at their web orientation on Thursday, August 3rd. Eleanor Roosevelt High School's dual immersion program welcomed their incoming freshmen who are enrolled in dual language immersion program on Tuesday, June 13th, providing orientation and food. Eleanor Roosevelt is currently hosting their annual summer camp for students whom are part of freshman, sophomore, and junior and senior class councils, as well as their Eleanor Roosevelt's Associate Student Body. All programs are currently planning for the upcoming school year of 2017, 2018, which begins on Wednesday, August 9th. Any questions?
No. Thank you, Oscar.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody? We'll move on to item five, public comments. Just so everybody's aware, any member of the public can address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, so anything that's on the agenda. And anything that's not on the agenda, just be advised, however, we will not be able to take any action on anything that's brought up not on the agenda. So, if you haven't filled out a blue speaker card and you intend to speak, please fill one out and present it to the city clerk. Do we have any speaker cards?
Our first comment card is Rita Nelson.
I think you can hear me. Can you hear okay?
We do record the meetings? We record. We do record the meetings? Thank you.
My name is Rita Nelson, N E L S E N. I'm a resident of the City of Eastville. I'm also a resident for the City of Ontario, the Central Parks Commissioner for 27 years. I was here for the incorporation. I've been here for the Brady game. I live in District Two, and Mayor, Councilwoman Michelle Calhoun, Stephen Aguilar, and the audience. I love my city of Eastville, and Joe, you know that. I love my city of Eastville. And it's been a very hard thing to do. I live at your homes. I live in Eastville on the weekend, and I live in Ontario because I must live in the city, which I have jurisdiction via council, city commissioners. It's been very difficult for me because I come back on the weekend to see my home, do live in the garden, keep up my home. We're right there at Ronald Reagan Elementary School. I love Ronald Reagan, and I'm very close to the teachers and the principals there. We're in the Standard Pacific Home, so I'm trying to give you the district of where we're located, because it's important. When I talk about petition, you know, where am I located? I mean, your district, am I correct?
Yes.
I have been involved in my neighborhood because I'm so close to all the young kids and the parents there. We all moved in about the same time, in 2008, 2009, we moved in 2009. And I have loved my home. I have loved my area. I have loved my neighborhood. And I was making aware of this. In fact, I am reporting to you, and I know we've got open, but because the people in my neighborhood have baseball games, so that's why I'm speaking on their behalf. But I've been very concerned, and I don't know if it's your areas, and I don't know if it's in your region, but we've been hit with birthing centers. And if you know about birthing centers, these are Chinese people. They come to your neighborhood, and they come in, and can I just say real fast? They come to your neighborhood, they don't show any semblance of activity to your neighborhood, whatever. They're there, the people drop them off late at night. They live in Diamond Park, the people that are dropping them off. We have eight to 10 people that are living right next door to me in the two-story, five, six-bedroom home, four and a half, five bathrooms, the big home. I'm in a smaller, one-story home with four bedrooms. You can see, my home can still be accessed and go to a birthing center. Now, the house next door to me just went up for sale. Guess what's going to happen? Another birthing center's going to happen because it's just as large as the one that they're at now. I'm concerned. I have brought up four. I'm not in any coalition. I'm here by myself because I've noticed that this has been happening. The house is all boarded up. The windows are all boarded up. The beautiful glass door, that's got cardboard on it. This is my neighborhood. I'm asking you. I know that you can't answer me. I know that because I've been at city council in Ontario also. But you know what? I know that you can't respond to me. I am just asking you for direction. Give me some semblance, that there can be some organizational kind of thing, either petition, my neighbors are willing to go out a petition. Can you think of something that I can do? I am not going to interfere in their life. I just need help in direction. That's all I need, Mayor, and all of you. That's all I need.
Thank you. We will, someone will reach out to you. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just real quick. There is a, we did set up a committee that this issue is one of the items that this committee focuses on, and there will be an update toward, at the end of the meeting, the end of the city council during our council comments regarding this specific issue.
Thank you so much. That's all I want you to do. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We have any more speaker cards? Okay.
Ma'am, we do have a code enforcement officer right behind you. If you could please speak.
Do you have a business card?
Yes, ma'am. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. Has any staff member or anyone else asked for anything to be pulled?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had Ray Hernandez asked to pull 6.4.
Mr. Mayor, I would also like to pull item 6.6 for discussion. I have a few questions, and I would move a ballot if that's appropriate.
Yes, sir. So, 6.4 and 6.6? All right. So, let's see. I'll entertain a motion to approve the rest of it.
So, move. Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lormore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Go ahead and go to 6.4. Where are we going to do that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Ray Hernandez has asked to pull 6.4 and address public comments.
Okay. Is Ray there? Yeah, Ray's over there.
Just for the, good evening, Mayor, councilmember, staff. Just for the record, did you approve 6.4?
No.
You have? Okay. Still have the vote. Okay. Thank you. Name is Ray Hernandez. I live on Bearborn Street. At the last council meeting, there was a great amount of time focused on how to culminate and donate time, donated time, this council extends to public. This should not be the basis on how to written policy. It's all based on discretion with no written policy existing. We know how generous our mayor Joe Tesari is. I love you, Joe. However, the public time extensions will not ensure future mayors will follow in your footsteps. Little was discussed on what would be better for the public. With one exception, Councilman Bradden Plot did make comment to support the public using the term "it could be challenging with 22 minutes to address issues." Arrest my case with the public speaker. He also felt it was important to agendize this subject matter, and thank you, Mayor Torasi, for backing that up. Clearly, the average is three minutes of public non-agendized commentary. I have surveyed over 30 surrounding municipalities, finding none limited to a two-minute timeframe. Averages are the barometers of measurement. With that said, then it's safe and fair to say Eastville currently rates deep when it comes to extending time to the public. It's below average in public commentary time standards. Donated time cannot be the excuse, especially when no written policy to support this practice exists. When time is limited, we, the people, are denying the opportunity to explain concerns. This is a great way to avoid accountability, but a poor way to govern. Without very meaningful communication, nothing gets done effectively. I'll end this soon. One of the functions of the city attorney is to advise the city council of legal aspects, certain actions or inactions, including those related to the Brown Act. I want to thank the city attorney at the last council meeting explaining the difference between public commentary time and agendized time. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for educating the city council on protocols affecting time limits and how they apply. I urge you tonight to approve the consent calendar point six, 6.4. It's the right thing to do for the people and the right time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Any others? Can I get a motion?
I would move 6.4. Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Lormore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. We'll move on to 6.6. Do we have any public comments?
We've received none.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask if staff could give us an update on the scheduling for the property acquisition. My understanding was it was nearly done or almost complete. What does this resolution do? And given SB 1 and SB 132, what are we doing with the county to work with their overall accelerated timelines?
Greg Bridge, supervising engineer. Good evening, there's Tesari in the city council. As far as timeline goes, the acraisals are pretty much complete. They have added temporary construction easements in the appraisal process. The offer should be going out, it's very near to do. This resolution essentially reauthorizes the county, the authority to just eliminate if necessary. And the county's the likely agency to handle this. The county's one that's doing the acraisals. They're one to qualify by county standards to do acraisals. And also, though, there's any of the main costs, so I'm going to have, as necessary. It's necessary for the state to have a right-of-way certification in place, which means they have all right-of-way in place, all the construction easements, before they can actually request for you to advertise a bid to project. The intent is to bid the project early January with the idea that construction will commence around May, or June. And it's accelerating timeline. The intent is to accelerate the construction process so that we'll be impacted by, only that our Christmas season will impact in one year. The second year, they expect to have a freeway open by October, early November. And that's really important because it's funding. If the project's not completed by 2023, we will lose funding. But what's interesting about this is the Hamner Avenue Bridge, it needs to commence almost immediately after this. It's open for them to be completed by 2023. So, this kind of chain reaction is happening here. So, this project is being accelerated. They're having their meetings. Critical path, as far as the timeline is concerned, is obtaining right-of-way and also getting utility agreements.
I appreciate that. On the TCEs, you kind of answered the question. We anticipate bidding, you said bidding in January and starting construction?
May or June.
May or June. So, we'll be paying on those TCEs from the time that the right-of-way certification is done to May? Is that about correct?
As soon as offers are accepted, they will pay.
Offers are accepted.
Make payment.
Okay.
Initially, the temporary construction easements, they will pay for three years.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I would move approval of this item.
Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Lormore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
We'll go ahead and move on to item seven, public hearings. 7.1 is a public hearing item to review the Burttec Waste Industries 2017-18 rate increase request.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the city council. The item before you is a recommendation to approve the rate increase for Burttec for the fiscal year 1718. As you can see in the index calculation, the rate increase approximates a 1.77 overall rate increase, which is attributed to an increase in the Consumer Price Index, which has gone up 1.89 percent. And the disposal green waste processing rate, which is out of the Agua Mansa landfill, which is the unincorporated Rubido area, has gone up 1.54 percent for the aggregate total of 1.77 percent. So, the recommendation by staff is to approve the rate increase for fiscal year 17 and 18. And just for the public's knowledge, this rate increase applies to everything in the City of Eastville, north of Belgrave, which is commercial and industrial properties only, consisting of no residential areas. I do have Mr. Mike Aragon, the Vice President of Burttec, available, and myself available to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if you can open the public hearing.
I'm sorry. Do we have any speaker cards?
We have none.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that.
No, we don't want to close the public hearing yet.
Public comment. Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this as stated. Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Lormore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. We'll move on to item eight, city council business. 8.1, budget study session for the annual operations and capital improvement budget fiscal year 2017-18 draft.
Good evening, Mayor Tesari and councilmembers. This is the third budget workshop study session that the city has held. The first one being March 23rd. We discuss some historical trends, forecasts. We discuss council goals and priorities. The second one was held April 12th, which discussed the public safety contracts and service for fire and police. Today, our goal is to go over our current fiscal situation, estimated revenues, proposed expenditures, look over capital improvements, some forecasts, and discussion and questions regarding some of your goals and priorities for this upcoming budget year. This, I just want to reiterate, we are still in a draft format. This is a proposed draft. We will plan to bring back the proposed adopted budget next council meeting on June 28th. And there will be changes depending on what your priorities and goals and questions are. So, this is a guideline, and again, it is a draft and it will change. So, why do we have a budget? It is basically a blueprint for providing services to the community of residents and constituents. It's a financial plan for the year, and it matches the available resources, all the revenues we have. We need to see how many, how much revenues we have so we can meet the community needs through operating and capital expenditures. We have several practices that we use when we do the budget. The first being, we try to be as conservative as we can within our means. We want to balance the general fund budget so revenues do equal expenditures. We don't want to pull from reserves when we do this balance. So, whatever revenues we have, we don't want to exceed that with our expenditures. We try to build in contingencies. These are somewhat of cushions, so if events happen during the year, we have a little bit excess, so we don't have to pull from those reserves. And we also want to look into investing in the futures, to try to think long-term for some of the projects, build out, and so forth. So, before we go into the current budget, we want to look at our current fiscal situation and talk about some of the reserves that we have. Before you see a trend, we've had, the red line is the historical revenue. So, we've seen it go up and up and up every year, and it's starting to flatten out. The blue bars are the expenditures. So, we've always exceeded, the revenues have always exceeded expenditures. So, every excess we have, year over year, adds to our reserves. As you can see, in 2017, we had the expenditures go up quite a bit. This is due partially to the increase in the patrol hours for police, up to 90 hours a day, and also due to the building, the construction of the new second fire station. So, it did increase quite a bit, and we see that we are hitting break even for estimated So, as I mentioned, we've always exceeded, revenues have always exceeded expenditures, which have added to our reserves. Well, what do reserves mean? We, there's three categories, and this is according to GASB, Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. Restricted is legally required. An example would be fire fund. We cannot spend anything from fire revenues other than for fire services. Committed is generally something internally imposed by council by resolution. So, we have committed in prior years $3 million to the construction of the civic center, future civic center, and that was through council action in prior years. Assigned is an earmarked item, so we would earmark that for a specific purpose, which could be, for example, economic development. So, our estimated reserves as of July 1, so coming up in a couple weeks after continuing appropriations, is roughly 24.4 million. And that's a huge accomplishment. I just want to congratulate the council and staff for being conservative and being fiscally minded in order to essentially- in order to essentially save that amount of money in the last six years or so of incorporation. But not all of that is available. Fifty percent of our expenditures are committed for emergency contingency, which is generally six months of operation. So that is seven point eight million dollars. As I mentioned before, the Civic Center is committed for three million dollars. And our fire operations is restricted. So of that twenty-four point four million, four point two of that is restricted for fire operations. So as you can see, just over fifteen million is committed or reserved. And what's left over is just over nine million dollars available. And this reiterates what we've just discussed as far as the trends. So again, we're about twenty-four point four million. And you can see on that last bar, the highlighted sections, again, seven million for that should be rainy day contingency. Three million for Civic Center and then about four point two for fire. And again, the remaining available is just over nine million. So some best practices for using those reserves. We generally don't want to use that for ongoing operations. If you can equate that to borrowing, we don't want to borrow against ourselves for ongoing operations. So if you were, for example, to purchase a car from your savings account, that's unsustainable. You're gonna run out of money instead of using it from your resources or continuing revenues. Unassigned reserves is sort of a savings account of sorts. You want to save for the future. Generally, we use those reserves for one-time purchases or capital items and also for stabilization for future economic uncertainties. Nobody can predict the future, but it's nice to have that cushion in case something, there is a downturn in the economy. So now that we've talked about reserves, I want to go into the estimated revenues for the upcoming year. We've estimated revenues for all funds, restricted and general, for twenty-seven point six million dollars. Of those revenues, fifty-five percent of that is general fund. All the other uses are restricted. Going into more detail from the general fund, which is about twenty point five million dollars, you can see the breakdown of the resources we have. The majority comes from sales and use tax and property tax. Other sources of revenue are licenses, franchise fees, penalties and forfeitures and other. Because the majority is sales tax, we want to understand that a little bit better and where it comes from. Thirty-six percent of the general fund revenues come from sales tax, which the, the sales tax rate in Eastville is seven point seven five. But not all of that goes to Eastville. Four cents of that goes to the state of California, two and a fourth goes to Riverside County, and then Eastville collects one and a half percent. That half percent is restricted for transportation uses and cannot be used for a general fund. The other largest source of revenue is property tax. Our base property tax rate is one percent of the home's value. So of every dollar paid in property tax, we get about one cent of that. And you can see the breakdown, most of it goes to schools, the county, education and so forth. Part of that is restricted for fire services. So if you break down that one cent, point zero six three cents goes to the city for fire services. So this is the sources, the revenues in dollar amounts. And we'll go into each of these individual line items separately. I just want to point you to the totals. So our budgeted for the sixteen seventeen year was fourteen point two million. And we are estimating in the new budget year seventeen eighteen, fifteen point seven million. It seems like a large increase, but in prior years, we were able to budget very conservatively, estimate our revenues a little bit lower to give ourselves a little bit more cushion. This year, things are tightening up, so we wanted to be more realistic. If you can see that white line at the very bottom, the actual general fund revenues are estimated for this current fiscal year, about fifteen point three. So as I mentioned before, it is definitely flattening out. We're not going to see that increase that we've seen in prior years. Also, I want to point out the second to the bottom line, this is a new item. It's called a cost allocation plan. We have not had this previously, but we needed to close a budget gap. And this is pretty standard in other jurisdictions where we have indirect costs. And actually, we'll talk about that right now. We have indirect costs throughout the city such as administration, insurance, building and maintenance. That is, in other cities, spread out over non-general fund sources. For example, gas tax, measure A, A Q M D. We have not done that in prior years. But we will, we propose to do it this year in the, in the new budget year to spread those indirect costs out through the citywide services. So to go into more detail, we'll start with property tax. We anticipate that it'll continue to grow at a steady pace because of construction and property sales. However, we did want to be a little more conservative using the California Consumer Price Index of two percent. So you'll see that increases exactly two percent. Sales and use tax, again, is one of the bigger revenue sources. We use HGL as our sales tax and property tax consultant. We have based our estimates on their analysis and expertise. They have relayed to us that sales continue to move in a positive direction. We've had a lot of economic development and construction of commercial sites. So we anticipate about a seven point three million dollar revenue for sales tax. And you can see at the bottom that we're estimating the actual for this year at seven point one. So again, we're flattening out. Franchise tax, we looked at historical trends and this year, our Southern California gas remittance was quite lower than it has been in previous years. And we are researching why that is. But we are planning to revisit franchise agreements with Waste Management to look at the rates we charge and compare it with other cities. And we're in the process of doing that right now. So we hope to perhaps bring that back mid-year with higher estimates. Licenses and fees, we're anticipating a growth of seven percent. Development growth continues. And again, once we have the build-out of the city, that may decline in future years. And all of those growths are offset by, by the expenditures for those development services. Fines and penalties, we've implemented several programs within the city. We've implemented third-party collections, which have increased our revenues in that area. We've purchased electronic citation devices for better efficiency. And we've employed a part-time dedicated street sweeping employment officer. So as a result, we've seen an increase in those citations and compliance. Lastly, we have a huge jump in the intergovernmental and other revenue. There's several reasons for this. The first thing, we've participated in the abandoned vehicle abatement program with Riverside County. We've contracted with an investment advisor to more than triple our investment revenue. And we are proposing to implement a passport acceptance facility at City Hall, which should bring in, we're estimating about one hundred thousand for that service. So now that we know what our resources are, we can go to our expenditures. As you can see, the majority of our expenditures are for operations. This will include fire and police. Our personnel are just our in-house staff. And as you know, most of our, our services are provided by contract staff. So that, the contract staff will be included in operations. Personnel, again, is just the employed staff, which represents only five percent of expenditures. And a capital outlay, that includes measure A, gas tax, all the streets, highways. All of those expenditures are included in capital outlay. This is the same information presented in numbers form, so you can see the change from year to year. Our personnel, we're proposing an increase of two hundred fifty-eight thousand. And we'll go over why that is in the next slide. Our operations, our proposed increase is one point one million. Capital outlay is proposed sixty-eight, almost sixty-nine thousand for a total increase of one point four million, or ten percent. And I just want to reiterate that our expenditures, our proposed expenditures do equal our revenues. So we will have a balanced budget.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, mind if I point to the comment? Councilman Plot? I noticed on our total expenditures, we're at, on the, on the graph, it's at thirty-three million, but our estimated revenues are at twenty-seven million, but yet we're supposed to have a wash. Is there something I'm missing on that?
Yes, when we go to the general fund expenditures, we want a balanced budget on general expenditures. But when we look at these total expenditures for all funds, it includes all of our restricted funds such as gas tax, measure A. We have several, a lot of reserves in those funds, which we're using for capital items. So you're gonna see, for all funds, a higher expenditure than you will revenue, just because we're using those reserves.
So maybe we jump ahead of the boat, I apologize. So like for the measure A or A Q M D or something, you know, those funds, we might see a higher expenditure versus the revenues.
Correct.
Sorry.
And again, because we will be using those reserves, which they are for capital expenditures.
Thank you.
So our proposed personnel increase is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Some of the reasons for this, we're proposing, is adding a second code enforcement officer for a two code enforcement officer model. And also increasing our street sweeping officer from a half full-time equivalent to point seven five. So that net increase equals one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And we have some offsets in code enforcement to mitigate that increase, which we'll talk about in operations, part of that being reducing some administrative costs. The second reason being, we want to classify an office assistant to deputy city clerk. And there's other changes in city clerk office that were approved in this fiscal year for a net decrease of almost eleven thousand dollars. And then I want to point out that we've, we've been in the process of doing a job, a job study to look at what our staff are actually doing compared to what their, their titles are and what their classifications are. And we're, we are still in the process of doing that, as well as looking at salary surveys with other cities. So there may be some changes we bring back to you in the next meeting for personnel, but these are proposed as of the, this draft date. The other change is we are taking on more human resources and moving that to the management analyst position. But in order to backfill some of the finance duties, we are proposing an additional position to backfill that absence of the management analyst in finance with a senior account clerk. We are also looking at revising the salary range, but the net effect of that is roughly ninety-three thousand dollars. The other minor change is to propose to change bilingual pay from five percent of pay to a flat rate of one hundred dollars a month. And that's based on some comparisons with other jurisdictions. So this is the breakdown of the general fund and fire fund. As you can see, the majority goes to law enforcement, fire and community development. Our total uses for general fund and fire is twenty point seven million dollars. And you can see sixty percent, sixty-seven percent of the general fund and fire goes to public safety. So I wanted to show this in numbers as well. And I want to break it down by administration, community development and public safety. So the first thing, administration. This is all of your city council, city attorney, city clerk, city manager, finance, and building, building and facilities and so forth. This is generally not cost recovery. It's departments and divisions that serve an administrative function. So you can see the total increase for these administrative departments is almost three hundred thousand dollars, or eleven percent. And I'll highlight some of the major differences for each of these divisions. So for our city council, there's a ten percent increase for twenty-seven thousand. This is due by including health benefits for all council members, although the majority don't use the entire allotted amount. We still want to budget for that in case it will be used. And anything that's not used, including some budget depositions, will be a contingency. So it'll be more of a cushion. Whatever's not used, we'll just go towards that cushion or contingency for unforeseen events. This being one of them. The city clerk is a decrease of roughly sixty-eight thousand. And this is due to a non-election year. Every two years, an election is held, so you're gonna see a fluctuation from year to year in that department. The city manager department increased about thirty-three thousand or four percent. As discussed, we are reallocating the management analyst position to the city manager's office for human resources. And that is, that increase is being offset by eliminating the grant writer consultant. However, we can employ the grant writer consultant as, on an as-needed basis, should we choose to do that. If we see a grant we'd like to pursue, we can consult individually instead of a retainer. In finance, we're seeing an increase of roughly ninety-two thousand dollars, or sixteen percent. This is not due to any increase in services. Previously, we have excluded property tax administrative charges, sales and property tax audit costs as an expense because we've netted it against revenue. However, that is not compliant with GAAP. So we want to make sure we, we've itemized those costs in our expenditures. As a result, you'll see that increase, however, services have not changed. So it's more of a compliance issue versus a increasing services. General government has increased roughly sixty-one percent. This is a large increase, however, it's due mostly to a line item contingency amount in order to balance the budget. Last year, or actually in this current year, sixteen seventeen, we have used two hundred and twelve thousand dollars in contingency for unforeseen events. So again, that cushion comes in handy throughout the year, so we don't have to pull from reserves or exceed our resources. So that's why you'll see the big difference. It's not, other than the city hall lease increasing, there's no increase in services to this, this department. So we've talked about administration. I want to move on to community development. This will include your building and safety, your engineering, planning departments, as well as code enforcement. So the bottom line increase for community development is three hundred and forty thousand dollars, or eleven percent. For individual divisions or departments, I want to go over significant increases again. In planning department, we are expecting an increase of a hundred thousand dollars, or thirteen percent. And this is due to anticipated projects throughout the year, including the sign code, Civic Center, landscaping, zoning code, and remainder of the Lille project. So those are specific projects that we're anticipating for this coming year. The building and safety department, we anticipate an increase of fourteen percent. However, this increase is going to be offset by licensing revenue and development revenue that, that will offset that cost increase. Code enforcement, we had mentioned moving to a two-officer model and increasing the full-time equivalents for street sweeping enforcement. We anticipate the street sweeping enforcement officer will supplement some of those administrative duties. And also, we are and also we are proposing to reduce some of the administration to be handled by the officers themselves.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Rush.
Thank you. Question on code enforcement. I don't see on your PowerPoint here our, our cost recovery as small as it is with respect to code enforcement. What is our anticipated fines and fees and administrative citations and all that associated with code through the settlements that we're getting? Do we have a number for that?
That's a good question. In our budget document, in our draft document, on each of the department summaries, we show a contributing revenue line item. So for each, each of these administrative or community development areas within the city, we show what revenues each department is bringing in. For the code enforcement, we anticipate about four hundred and sixty thousand in contributing revenue for a budget of four hundred and ninety. So they are almost a full cost recovery. Their revenues include fines and fees for parking, for municipal code, and for foreclosure property registration.
Thank you.
So the next area is public safety. This is the biggest increase of five hundred and fifty-six thousand, or fifteen percent. And I will, public safety includes the law enforcement, code, animal control, crossing guards, and a separate line of fire department. We, we do that separately because they receive their fire tax separately from the general fund revenues. So in police department, we are not proposing an increase in patrol hours due to the cost of that increase. However, we do show an increase of eight hundred and five thousand. That is just for the contract rate increase. There is no change in the patrol hours that we're proposing for this budget year. The total that we have for this budget year and that we're proposing for next year is ninety hours a day. However, we do have dedicated positions, as you can see there. Two zone deputies, a motor officer, two traffic officers, two CSOs.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have a question on the public safety. The police department, do we utilize any reserve officers, and does that affect our budget also? Do you know?
The Rupa Station does have reserve officers. I wanna say that we have three or four, and that does not impact the contract rate at all.
And are they utilized here, or are they assigned in certain areas, or?
They're, they're assigned throughout the Rupa Valley Station jurisdictions, so they're between Eastvale, Rupa, and Norco.
So there's some line items that we discussed in our previous budget sessions. To add ten hours of patrol hours per day is roughly six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So on top of the contract rate increase of eight hundred thousand, you would have an additional six hundred and ninety thousand. And that's just for your information. However, to fund that, you would need to find the resource to, to do so, or dip into your reserves. So that's something that staff has discussed possibly bringing back at mid-year, depending on our economic developments or some of the revenues we're seeing from the state, depending on the timing of that. So it's, it's not off the table, but we are not proposing any increase for this, this year. In addition to that, adding a motor officer is about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And to do both, ten hours and a motor officer on top of the rate increase would be about one point nine million dollars to do the additional ten hours of rate increase and a motor officer, just for your information.
And how, about how much do we, let me do the math. Can you go back to the, the annual? Okay, so... How much are we paying per, oh geez, how much are we paying per month?
Do a quick math. Well, right now, our budget is seven point nine, almost eight million dollars for the year.
So with no increases, we're paying about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars per month?
Roughly.
Based on the invoices, it's roughly, just for the straight patrol hours, it's roughly five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month. And then we get a separate invoice, excuse me, for any overtime or supplemental charges like the, the R-CIT for the motor officer and things like that. So adding that all together, you're looking currently, current budget year, it's about, almost six hundred thousand dollars a month in law enforcement, not including their projected increase for next fiscal year.
So we're also seeing an increase in our fire department expenditures, and this is due to a contract rate increase as well of seven percent. In addition, because we have built the second fire station, we need to staff it. For this current year, we've staffed it for half a year. I believe it was opened in February, if I, correct me if I'm wrong. But we need to budget for the seventeen, eighteen year for an entire year. So this includes staffing, it includes maintenance, it includes utilities, and all those things that come with having a second station. The optional cost to staff the medic engine, as we discussed in the public safety meeting in April, is roughly six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And just to reiterate, we are limited to our resource of property tax. Anything exceeding our property tax will have to be pulled from the general fund to supplement those services. This is the, the slide I discussed as far as the adding the ten patrol hours, the motor officer, or doing all of the above. So you'll see the line item increase, and then if you want to do a combination of any of those, you'll see the total increase on the right. And again, we can reevaluate that at mid-year, depending on our resources from the state and economic development and how that's doing. Just wanna point out a few capital improvement highlights, and then after my presentation, I'll turn it over to Joe to go in more detail for capital projects. Some of the highlights for completed projects are the fire station again, bids for Hamner Avenue rehabilitation, for bids for county flood control. We've completed the radar speed display signs and storm drain at the new fire station on Chandler and South Lee. Some priorities for the year are the overlay of residential streets, Arch Bell widening, some other storm drains, and purchasing the property for the future Civic Center. Among, and there's also some other projects that Joe will discuss. So Public Works has been very busy. So we've looked at our proposed budget and estimated revenues. However, we like to forecast for the next five years to see where we're, we're sitting and what we can look for in the future and set some priorities and goals. We see, where, where you see the arrows, again, we had the increase of patrol hours and fire station construction, so you'll see a lot more expenditures in those two years, a big jump. However, we're seeing, because of the increase in the contract rate for public safety and some other issues, that we're seeing an increase in the, the forecast for expenditures ongoing. However, again, the revenues are flattening out, so we're, we're looking at a break-even point in 2020. And beyond that, we need to look for other resources or reduce expenditures somehow to, to have that balanced budget.
Before you move on, I have a couple of questions. On the, the general fund expenditures, I think you had mentioned, it's not in the package here, but our actuals for this fiscal year are fifteen point one million, give or take, which is about nine hundred thousand dollars more than anticipated. How do we reconcile, though? Things are flattening out, sales tax revenue is flattening out, yet I think on the proposed budget for the next year, we're about five hundred thousand dollars over what our actuals are for this year. And I also saw an estimate for the planning department, seven hundred and some odd thousand, where that's over our actuals for this year, for this year. So on one hand, things are slowing down, but yet we're anticipating and budgeting for increased revenues from those two aspects.
Well, well, that is the challenge. We're seeing, services aren't slowing down, the city's still as active as ever, so we need to provide those services. However, to balance the budget, we need to find additional resources to cover those costs. So that, that is the challenge that we're facing. And a lot of other cities, jurisdictions, counties are also facing budget deficits and trying to find ways to reduce that deficit. So in a later slide, I mean, that's what we need from council, is some direction on how we do that, or at least try to plan for those, those deficits in future years. And I know we're putting a lot of efforts into economic development, and Michelle can attest to that a little bit more if she chooses to. And eventually, again, the city's gonna be built out, so some of those, those services will eventually reduce, especially in community development. We're not gonna see as high expenditures in community development. So I don't really have a, a specific answer to that, other than we just need to plan for it and anticipate it and work around it and...
Okay, I appreciate that. The additional ten hours for law enforcement, what's the cost of that specifically? I know we had it in the last budget, and I didn't see it in here.
The, just the ten hours is six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars approximately. And to, to speak to some of Anna's points, on the economic development side, the projections on sales tax revenue do not include anything that is currently under construction. So there, there are projects that are coming online that I have projections on what kind of sales tax production they would deliver to the city based on the square footage. But again, we take a very conservative approach, and we do not count our chickens before they hatch. So that's not included in these revenue projections for a coming fiscal year. And on top of that, sales tax is always trailing. So, you know, it's trailing about a quarter.
There's a three to six month delay on sales tax.
Mr. Mayor? So just to clarify on my, my, my part for me, so these projections here do not include anything like Costco coming in, or Walmart, or anything like that?
That's correct. Yeah, this is just status quo. We don't, like Michelle said, we try to underestimate and overperform. So we know those things are down the pipeline, but we don't want to, again, count our chickens before they hatch. We don't wanna anticipate that revenue, should something happen, to not have that revenue come in.
Nor does it include any of the future revenue from the recent legislation.
That's correct.
Correct.
We had discussed this kind of at staff level and with the finance committee, which consists of Mayor Tisari and Councilmember Plot, that because of SB one thirty, yes, we will see some reallocation of VLF dollars, which we, we do have a slide here, which is sixty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents per capita. But according to Sacramento, we won't see our first payment until May of two thousand and eighteen. And that, that being the case, and not, not having, I mean, that's the end of next fiscal year, so... We don't feel it's prudent to include that information into our current budget season. If it should come early, then, then we can revisit it. Exact, and that is what, what we're proposing, that we, that, that does not mean, you know, adding ten hours from the sheriff's, for sheriff's department services is completely off the table, but we have to see what comes in. We have to see the, the fruitfulness of some of these projects that are currently under develop, under development, as well as the VLF money. If it drops before May two thousand and eighteen, that would be fantastic. But at this time, we're counting on what we know for sure, and that data comes from HDL based on the businesses that currently exist here in the city of Eastvale and are reporting sales tax revenue to the State Board of Equalization.
Thank you, Michelle. Do you have one question?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Councilman Plot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to SB one thirty and getting that funding, that we, I mean, is this, obviously, if it's something that's, that's gonna be ongoing, or at least we hope it's gonna continue, I mean, are we gonna have to deal with this year in and year out that, hey, our payment's gonna be in May? If we know that it's come, I mean, I, I guess, you know, and I, I, I appreciate the conservative doom and gloom approach to the budget, but it's also, at the same time, it's, it's, if the money's going to be there, and it is guaranteed, and that might be the question, if it's guaranteed, but are we gonna do this next year, where, hey, we're here in June, yeah, we're gonna get payment in May? I, it makes it difficult for us here to know that, because, yeah, we would love, I mean, for myself, I know we'd love to have more law enforcement, and that's a, that is a, that's twenty-three percent of our general fund, revenues of that extra four or five million, whatever it ends up being. But how should we start looking at this year in and year out, and every time it's gonna be right at the end of our year?
Councilmember Plot, that's actually a very, very good question. And in, in trying to assemble this budget and, and give the, the council some, some hard numbers, we had, I had gone back and forth with the League of California Cities and the folks in Sacramento. So this first payment is not going to hit until May of two, at the end of May two thousand and eighteen. The VLF dollars are tied to property taxes. So it's sixty, as I, we said, sixty-six dollars, eighty-seven cents per capita. Property tax is paid in April and May, and then it's allocated approximately thirty to forty-five days afterwards. So moving forward, we would see our first payment in May, because there's the implementation of the bill and the rollout and the calculation, so it's, it's gonna be a prorated. But coming December of eighteen, everyone's gonna pay their property taxes, hopefully. And then late January, February of nineteen, we'd see another payment, and then you'd be on more of a cycle. So it would be, you know, as I said, property tax is paid in December and in April, and then you've got about forty-five to sixty days afterwards that you, the money trickles down to the local level. I hope that happens.
No, it does, and then we would have at least, we can be a little more consistent.
Yes, sir. We'd have a better, a better idea of what we can count on and a cycle that we can depend on.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Rush, you had asked about some of these deficits.
Mayor Procham.
Oh, sorry.
One question before we move forward. There was a statement made earlier that we needed to look at these financial forecasts, which, and be concerned about where we're going in terms of spending, and how to address that. But as we've just discussed, and I realize we're being conservative, we have a number of funds that should be coming this way. How, how worried do we need to be related to addressing our budget down the line at this point?
Again, that is, that's a, that's the million-dollar question. Years down the road, when the building, you know, the residential developers are no longer building homes in Eastvale, all of the different commercial centers are built out, it's, it's gonna be tight. And we're gonna have to be very prudent and conservative and aggressive in other methods. And that's where, looking at operations, trying to find operational efficiencies, things like the citation, handheld citation devices, you know, all of these... citation, handheld citation devices, you know, all of these, looking department by department to identify tools that we can use to, again, do more with less. But the reality is, we're already doing more with less. You know, the city has grown in population since incorporation. We were about forty-six to forty-eight thousand. Now, we're at over sixty-four thousand. The demands of the citizens do not decrease. So, we're going, yeah, yeah. The demands of the citizens don't decrease. We have to continue to deliver. And, and how we're going to do that years from now with a flattening stream of, revenue stream is, is going to be where things like Economic Development Action Plan are, are gonna be critically important. And again, looking at, from a policy level, how do you protect and strategically develop things that are going to produce the maximum return? So, going back, you know, just as an example, the LEO project. You know, council's vision on that was, is very specific, and you took kind of, in my opinion, of somewhat of a proactive and protective stance in doing a strategic plan, excuse me, a specific plan over that project to make sure that certain uses come out of it that are beneficial to the citizens. You did the same thing with the Goodman Commerce Center. You demanded a certain level of services so that you can provide a sustainable future for the citizens. We're gonna need to continue that trend, and it's not gonna be easy. Um that's why you guys get the big bucks. But again, I think, I think we have um staff that uh that work very hard and conservatively to, to provide the maximum to the citizens with the minimum.
Again, these are estimates. Once consistent revenues come in, we can revise these and revisit them and change our trends depending on what, what we see actually coming in versus what we think is gonna come in. So, the, these will change depending on on, like I said, historical numbers. So, with that in mind, um we do wanna keep some items in the forefront of our minds, including public safety costs, minimum wage regulations. As the city ages, our infrastructure will also age. Michelle mentioned population growth impacts from major development and construction of City Hall. So, all these things we need to keep in mind as we look towards the future. We'd mentioned recent state legisla, legislation and some of the, the major ones, the three major ones are SB one, which is the Road Repair Accountability Act. These are restricted funds, restricted to roads only, and we estimate about one point four million a year. However, the first payment is delayed. It'll be anticipated in November, and so there will be a prorated amount for that. It won't be the full year amount. Uh we have budgeted for this in our um capital improvement plan, which Joe can speak to. SB one thirty is the vehicle license fix. We are anticipating four point three million a year, which will be a huge help to the city. However, like Michelle mentioned, our payment is delayed, so we don't want to include that in our budget because we don't know the exact amount, and we, again, cross our fingers we'll get that in the, hopefully sooner. SB one thirty-two is Riverside County Transportation Efficiency Corridor funding, and these are for specific projects that is led by the county, including Hamner Bridge Widening and the Lim night I fifteen interchange. We will not see any of that money come to the city, however, we'll see the, the fruition or the results of that funding.
Anna, do you mind if I, I jump in on this slide? Um so, to, to go back and speaking to some of the council questions, how, how do we plan for this in the future? We are gonna look at everything. There's, there's gotta be no rock that is not turned over and reexamined. So, um we're currently in the process of reexamining our franchise fees. Um that would be waste management. That's gonna be BRTAC. We're, we're looking at um even our telecoms, you know. Is there, is there anything that we can, we can do there? We are going to be initiating a, a fee study to recover some costs that were never anticipated when we did our first fee study in two thousand and twelve, um like growhouses. That's not something that, that should be borne by the general fund. But at this current juncture, we don't have a fee schedule that, that uh, that addresses that. And there's, there's several other components on, on our fee schedule of, of things that we staff, at staff level, see now that we've got some time under our belt, the city's up and functioning, and we have more ongoing trends and services to deliver. We, we're starting to see gaps, and so that's something that we're going to be addressing in a, in a fee study and cost recovery. Uh James will be bringing a staff report to council, I believe, at the next, is it next council meeting? Or, yes, at the next council meeting to get that started. Again, optimizing our economic development through Economic Development Action Plan. Some of the other things that council may want to consider, which are much less savory, is uh initiating a utility users' tax. A lot of other cities do that. We currently don't, which, in my opinion, is an economic development tool. When I'm discussing that with prospective uh tenants for Eastvale, that, that is one of those positives for Eastvale. You know, we don't have a utility users' tax. We don't have a business license tax. We do a business registration. These are, but these are things that other cities have had to do in order to start bridging their gaps. Other cities in the inland empire this, this past election season did a sales tax initiative. Temecula, Riverside, Menifee, Hemet, and there's another one. They, they all initiated sales tax initiatives for uh the, and those are ballot measures. Some of them were geared specifically towards public safety. Some of them were a general, a general sales tax initiative. But just to put things in perspective, you know, City of Riverside will be generating uh three billion dollars through their sales tax initiative over a ten-year period. As I said, those are much less savory alternatives, but those may be things that we need to look at in the future. Some of the other options are to reduce non-essential services, to reduce staffing at City Hall, to reduce public safety positions, which I don't think is a, is an option, and, or exploring alternatives to public safety contracts.
So, just to wrap it up before we go to capital projects, uh these are some discussion questions and some thought questions to think about. Are we meeting current service levels? Are they satisfactory? How can we bring additional revenue? These are all things that we think about when we put this budget together, and also to discuss some of the priorities of council and the community. So, with that, and if there's no other questions, as far as this presentation, we'll go to capital projects and we can discuss afterwards.
Are there any additional questions on this portion of the budget?
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions. One was going back to uh proposed expenditures. Do we have any kind of uh contract compliance that we work with, with our contracts, such as like animal services, law enforcement, firefighting? Um and I think it kind of brought, got brought up at the town hall meeting when a question, or public safety meeting, when it got brought up from the animal services on that we share that with another city or another unincorporated area. And a commissioner asked about that when they leave our city, who pays for that? And he wasn't quite sure because I think sometimes, and I don't know if that happens in law enforcement or fire or what, but sometimes, I guess, we're allotted four hours. We don't always get that four hours. So, is there a contract compliance? If so, who oversees that and how does that work?
So, the, the city manager's office oversees the contracts for various services that we utilize. Previously, this, this discussion over can we do better, at a better cost, is there a cost savings? To look at alternatives. Uh we have looked at alternatives in the past. One of them was to contract with um the Inland Humane Society to provide a higher level of service at the same or lower cost. Those are things that we have explored in the past. Contracting with City of Norco, for example, for animal control services, that has been looked at. Contracting with City of Corona has, was, was looked at, but at the time, they, Corona didn't have their new animal shelters. So, that is something potentially to revisit. Again, these are all, these are all things that um that we need to go through one, almost one by one and reanalyze. You know, we just got done at staff level several months of meetings and analysis to figure out if going back to the property tax role for, for waste management delinquent accounts is a more cost-effective means of receiving our, our franchise fee. These are things that we're doing at City Hall. We're gonna have to continue to do that, and, and certainly with council and commissioners' input. It's just gonna be an ongoing process. You know, what may not have worked two years ago may, may work now. You know, speaking to the animal control contract. I know City of Norco has said they can't service the city of Eastvale because of the volume. They just don't have the space to accommodate our volume. The, the uh Humane Society, uh citizens really pushed back because it's thirty minutes away. It's in the city of Pomona. So, um but, you know, we'll continue to look at, at every, every contract.
And, and I know that it's a lot of work, especially going through and looking at all these, and, and very stressful to see, hey, where can we cut and what, what can we do? I think more specifically to what I'm referring to is not, not necessarily what's in the future, but even the current where we're at, as well as in the future. Such as, for instance, with animal control, we get four hours a day. Are we actually getting those four hours a day? I know that some contract services in other jurisdictions, that they do an evaluation as it gets towards the end of the month, the end of their billing cycle, and they check and they say, okay, where are we at compliance-wise? If we're supposed to have four hours a day, Monday through Friday, have we gotten that? Are we behind? Do we need to add eight hours to the next day? Same thing with law enforcement. Do we have anything that says, okay, ninety hours a day is what we're allotted? At the end of, getting close to the end of the month, we're only at, we're, we're under that. We haven't provided that many hours. Is there anything that's, that we look at to monitor that to make sure, to make sure that we're getting our money's worth? To make sure that we're getting what we're paying for, rather than just relying on our contract is this, this is what we're paying, we're gonna trust? Are we, is there any measure that we have that's in place for that?
That would be the monthly invoices. So, uh the monthly invoices come in, they're reviewed by me. Then they go to the finance department. Finance reviews them before they're put packaged into the warrant register. Then the finance committee reviews them as well before they actually are authorized for payment, and then that warrant register goes into the agenda packet. So, so yes, there's, there, there are really three different groups looking at it. First, city manager, then finance, then uh the finance committee.
And all of those invoices are itemized by hours typically, times the contract rate, so we do see that.
Todd, are you referring to, I mean, I, I think you're, I think you're referring to more like GPS type stuff instead of billing, or is that?
Yeah, not necessarily just billing, but more of making sure that that we're actually, yeah, for instance, going back to the animal services, and I think the same thing for, for law enforcement because we share the services with other jurisdictions. But similar to what Councilmember Plot was saying, almost the GPS, are we making sure, rather than them just billing four hours a day, Monday through Friday, are we actually getting that?
Yeah, they send a report with the invoice. There's, there's a report, the number of animals that were impounded, the number of licenses that were collected, the number of hours, the number of overtime, callouts, all those, all of those receipts are, are submitted on a monthly basis as part of their invoice. So, it's not an auto-pay feature, just because we have a contract, they automatically get paid a certain amount every month. No, they have to submit, and sometimes it's, sometimes it's lower than, than previous months. Sometimes it's, it's over. And that's, that's where the, the budget comes into play, is to not exceed what was budgeted.
But we know that we don't get, you mentioned animal control. We don't get all those four hours, and, and it's nothing that we can do. It, it's a union issue. They clock in, they drive here, they patrol, and if, you know, they have animals to take back, then that has to all be within that four-hour window. So, that's just one of those logistical challenges with contracting.
So, to, to, to your point, um when Animal Control gave a presentation to the Public Safety Commission, they did clarify for the commissioners that their clock does not start when they leave the Van Buren location. It starts when they hit Eastvale's border. But, yes, they are a part-time, code enforced, we only contract for fifty percent of an officer. So, you know, he's all over the inland empire, and he tries to put in his five hours, but sometimes he gets called away. Do I think it's the best model? Not necessarily. I think the city would get a lot more bang for their buck if they had a dedicated officer. But with dedicated officer comes an increased uh cost. But that does give us dedicated services. Um I did, at the suggestion of the Public Safety Commission, request a quote from Animal Control for a full-time dedicated officer for, just for the council's benefit. Our current uh contract um minus the license fee credit is valued at a hundred and six thousand dollars. If you, and that's, and that's for a half-time field officer. You add in, add additional hours to that, that field officer to create a full-time field officer, you're now looking at a hundred and seventy thousand dollar contract. That's a council decision. If that's, if that's something that, that council wants to, again, increase your level of services, that's, that's something that we'd, that's gonna come at a cost.
I think that we also have an option to also request an audit to see. I think everything's computerized, even with uh Animal Control, right? They have like a mobile digital terminal inside their vehicle. So, all, everything gets logged, you know, they hit the ninety-seven button, ninety-eight. And um so, we could actually request an audit where somebody actually goes and looks at all the numbers, they pull the logs. I don't know if the Sheriff's Department, you probably do that periodically, I hope.
Yeah, actually, uh specifically to the Sheriff's Department, we track and audit uh our contract hours and mileage on a daily basis. That is transferred onto a spreadsheet by one of my lieutenants, and it goes directly to our accounting division, who also keeps tracks and audits it on a daily and weekly basis. And then we have, I have a staff meeting with my lieutenants and contract lieutenants on a weekly basis. And during those meetings, uh they provide me the information of where we're at, whether or not we're over or under on our contract hours. And we are rarely over. We're typically under, uh which I don't like either. We should be exactly where we need to be. But we track that daily, weekly, and then monthly with the invoices.
And just to, so it wouldn't be unheard of to see an extra car or two rolling around at certain times of the year because you're trying to make up hours that you're sure?
Absolutely. Uh and that's one of our, our continued, for all the contract cities, is trying to provide the hours that we're contracted for. So, at times that we do have additional units uh throughout the cities, um we do rotate that, those people around so that they can provide the services to make up for those hours.
And, and that's exactly what I was referring to, is just making sure that even specifically- And that's exactly what I was referring to, is just making sure that even, specifically, yeah, for law enforcement, that when we get towards the end of the month, and I'm glad that you're keeping a good watch on that, that when we get towards the end of the month, that we realize that, hey, we're down on hours, yes, let's add an extra car. Just to make sure that we're getting what we're paying for, especially for all of us taxpayers that are paying for these services. We wanna make sure that we're getting, if we're getting ninety hours a day, that we're getting ninety hours a day, rather than eighty hours, eighty-five, whatever it is, so. That helps to clarify that. Is there, is there a range that we stay within contract compliance? Is there anything in our contract set in place that they have to be within two percent plus or minus, or anything, or do we just try and always stick towards that hundred percent?
No, we try to stick at a hundred percent. Like I said, typically, we're under. If we're in the neighborhood of, say, fifty hours under, that's, based on the percentages, that's probably equal to a hundred percent. So it just depends on where we're at, and like I said, we try to stay at a hundred percent or get to a hundred percent, that's our goal.
Okay. Thank you.
I know this never happens, but if you're over by a couple hours, do we get billed for it?
You do get billed for it, yes. And that rarely happens, right.
I had a question. The total reserve fund is, is that plus or minus? Or actually, you might be able to tell me, do we still owe the county any money, or have we paid that off?
We have paid the majority of it. We will pay all of it by June thirty.
So the reserves that you showed us?
Does not include.
Does not include that.
And I want to point out that reserves does not necessarily equal cash. So our cash balance is a little bit higher than the reserves, because we have those obligations or accounts payable or payroll that we need to account for.
Right, but we were holding that in reserves, okay.
Thank you for your presentation. I have one other question. In the bar graph that you showed in this budgeted year, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, there's a dip in expenditures for next year. Why, or sorry, for the next following year, why is that if services are going up, why was there a dip in expenditures? And it may be because of the other expenditures on the gas tax and those things, but I wonder why. Yeah, from basically two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, it takes a slight dip. What was the cause for that dip?
That's a good question. As you can see, this two thousand and seventeen year included the construction of the fire station, which we will not have next year. That accounts for the difference.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not a question, just, and the reason I was kinda harping on the law enforcement, you know, is I'm concerned with this potential wave, you know, that we might experience with increased property crimes, burglaries, you know, with Prop fifty-seven now, you know, coming out, regulations being issued, and what's gonna be the potential upset of that. Prop forty-seven, maybe one oh nine, things of that nature. We're in a difficult situation, but I don't wanna get caught with our proverbial pants down and have to make a rush, you know, to be reactive rather than proactive, so. It's hard for me to say, you know, let's pull money from here to rob Peter to pay Paul. You know, do we pull it out of reserves? I don't know. But I think, you know, I would like to strongly consider adding those additional ten hours. It's unfortunate, and it's also very upsetting, because these are one of these state mandated yet unfunded programs that our state legislator loves to do. I had a conversation today with someone on the Airport Land Use Commission, and it's not a great example, but it's another, you're gonna do this and you're gonna find a way to pay for it. And that seems to be a common theme. And that's now on the back of our citizens, on our financial health, on a whole bunch of other things. And do we sit and, you know, beat our head against a brick wall and yell and complain about it? Or, you know, do we suck it up and do something? I'm not in favor of any new taxes. I would be very much opposed to that. I'm very curious to look at, you know, this, these developer, not developer impact fees, but development fees. You know, slight concerns about that, but we'll see what comes of that. You know, there's a cost and a benefit, and appreciate staff, absolutely. I mean, we've always, these budget sessions, and I go to a lot of these, you know, are the best in my opinion. It's clear, it's concise, it's user-friendly, our residents understand it. It's formulated in a way that's very black and white. Obviously, it's our job to create the gray in that situation and try to meld the policy with the finances, so. That's something that I'm very much in favor of looking at. And where we get that money from, I think, you know, and appreciate the feedback of my colleagues. But it's also, you know, in a very unfortunate situation that we're being put in as well. I think the frustrating part is, we see these things on the horizon, but we, you know, we need to be very careful and conservative, which staff has done, because we can't jump for them. We see the potential sales tax, but, you know, something may happen. Nothing's written in stone. Part of what concerns me from the VLF perspective, and maybe it's just because I'm a conspiracy nut, but, you know, the governor's now trying to take over the Department of Equalization. Why is that, you know, effort out there? They're the ones that are gonna distribute our VLF funds. Putting that back in the hands of the Department of Finance scares the holy-you-know-what out of me. But there's only so many things that we can control, and our job is to control what we can control here, so. I'll get off my soapbox.
No, I think you're actually going right up the road I was considering. I'm glad you.
So we're carpooling?
Yeah. No, I would like to see that, a second, I want a separate budget with a ten-hour increase. I think we're at a. Ten hours, ten patrol hours.
So we have, we have that. It's part of this presentation. To add, to add the ten hours, as stated previously, you're looking at six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for one year. I would recommend that we revisit that in a few months after we have had an opportunity to revisit the franchise fees.
And this is not finalized, so.
Well, it does, it does need to be finalized by June twenty-eighth.
But it can be amended, right?
Yes, it can be amended. It could be amended in three months, it could be amended in six months.
Be amended July second.
It could be amended July second, exactly. Yeah, we could do a mid-year. I'm not sure what the legal requirement is to adopt the budget by June thirtieth.
We don't get paid.
Yeah. It's more of a, it's more of an economic accounting to have your budget done by June thirtieth. Technically, legally speaking, though, it's not required to have a budget by June thirtieth. You have to have a budget. There are some cities that don't have, that haven't had budgets in almost a year. But as Councilmember Rush said, it makes it very difficult then to be able to control your expenditures and revenues if you don't, so. The best approach is to adopt the budget within the timeframe. And then, as things change, I think as the city manager indicated, that you're gonna have a better idea of some of the revenues or some forecasts that may be more definitive, either at mid-year, and then you can revisit that. And then add those things that you were talking about as part of that.
And I agree. I mean, public safety is obviously our first and foremost concern in our city. I mean, that's our big concern, is public safety. I know that, and I don't mean to jump the gun for staff comments, but I know that staff is working with the Sheriff's Department in getting statistics put together. I would like to see if we can maybe bring back those statistics for the last maybe two, three years, just to show us and to have additional proof that this is why we do need those additional hours, because of seeing what's happening in crime. As well as, I don't know, does the Sheriff's Department have any kind of perspective, future perspective on what these bills are gonna do to crime? Do they anticipate? Do they do any kind of forecasting? Well, I know we're obviously gonna go up, but do they do any kind of specific forecasting on stuff like this?
I'm sure they do. I'm not privy to that right now, but I think we all see that the direction that we're going right now with these propositions and the crime increase, not only in our jurisdictions, but throughout the nation. So my, based on my thirty years' experience, I think we're gonna see it continue to grow until it levels out. And I don't know when that's gonna be.
I'd like to see if we could get those statistics that the staff and the Sheriff's Department are working on, if they can be brought to us, just so that we can especially show our residents that, hey, this is why we are doing this. Our budget's tight, but this is why we are trying to find the dollars somewhere.
So Councilmember Rigby, we are currently working on putting together the spreadsheet of the statistics to cover fiscal, well, calendar year fifteen, sixteen, and current year seventeen. If council wishes to add ten hours, it's gonna have to come out of reserves. There is no other place for it to come from prior to June twenty-eighth. And that's an ongoing operational expense, which is not typically what you use reserves for. So that's why my recommendation is not to do it at this time until we are able to sit down and reevaluate the franchise fees with, at minimum, your waste haulers, to see what that, what additional revenue stream could be generated from adjusting their agreements.
But are we looking at a ten percent bump, twenty percent?
On the franchise, well, let me put it to you this way. We have one of the lowest franchise fees in Riverside County.
How long does that process take? Like, how long are we looking at?
We've been wrestling with this for several months now.
Is there any way we can expedite that, so that we can kinda?
Well, we do have a meeting on Monday with Councilmember Plot and Councilmember Rigby. So we do have our first meeting.
Then we'll make sure it gets expedited.
Yeah. And that was, just to piggyback on what he's asking is, the question I have is, are we in the same situation? We renegotiate the franchise fee, when do we realize those increased revenues? Are we still playing, you know, the same game where we see, oh, this is gonna happen? But do we increase the hours, or do we wait for the money to come in?
The franchise fees get paid a little bit faster than the.
They get paid quarterly, about thirty days after the quarter ends.
And that all depends on whether we make that, whatever that we renegotiate, if it's effective immediately, if it's not effective till January first, so it has to do with that as well.
There will be, yeah, several variables with that.
Sorry, Michelle, just on that date, I have an invite, not that it's relevant, but it is somewhat relevant because it's time pressing. I have the meeting on the twenty-sixth, which is a week from Monday. Okay, it is?
Oh, it's the twenty-sixth. My apologies.
Is that still okay with time? Do we wanna shoot it sooner?
I think that was based on schedules.
I can't make that.
But again, this is where city council has the discretion to move forward with the budget at this time and bring it back, you know, thirty days from now, sixty days from now for a budget adjustment based on new findings or additional data, or.
I'm willing to do that, but, I mean, if we come back in the situations exactly the same, I'm prepared to go into the reserves to bring up our hours. With the amount of property crimes and the increase, it's out of control. So, I mean, we, obviously, we don't wanna put ourselves in a situation where financially we're hurting ourselves, but we're also, you know, we have a duty to the citizens to try to remain somewhat safe.
Well, and crime, crime's directly related to property values, too. I mean, you have an increase in crime, we're gonna see a decrease in property values, we're gonna see a decrease in property values, decrease in revenues. So we have to, we have to stay a step ahead.
Councilman Plot?
This could be for Michelle or Anna. Do we also look at, there's something we're looking at on the Finance Committee. It was, had to do with the development, the development impact fees, but also doing a pass-through charge for the legal side. We do that for mostly every other aspect of city with the exception of legal, where, through the development impact fees.
Oh, the two percent up charge?
Yes, the two percent. That's one of the areas where we don't charge on the developer's side the fees for Mr. Kavanaugh, but we kinda get that back. We, I know we're not doing that now, and it might not be, I mean, in retrospect, it might not be a lot, but it may be, when we're talking about, hey, that may help pay for ten percent of the cost.
We will look at that as part of a comprehensive user fee study, which is currently under study.
But it's not necessarily currently in our current.
It's not in our current budget, no.
Okay.
But we hope to bring that back. Well, next meeting, we'll propose to start that study, so it should be probably a thirty to sixty-day turnaround. Plus time to adopt, and I think sixty days after adoption, it'll be effective.
Any idea, like a ballpark, or of what, the dollar amount of what that could look like?
It won't be enough to cover ten hours.
No, I know, I assume that, I know that, but, you know, something that.
I don't have the numbers, but I can get them for you.
All right, I think we've already handled council discussions. Did we have any comment cards? Okay. Did you have something? Mayor Pro Tem Laramore?
Thank you, sir. I would tend to lean towards actually waiting until we have these discussions. I think we all, I absolutely would love to see an increase in hours. It sounds like all of us would. But if we don't have those funds in place, the unfun action will be to pull, take hours away down the line. That's not, I know that's something none of us wanna do. So I would urge, going slowly on this, even though, I know, I wanna do it, and I know all of you wanna do it, too. Thank you.
I would move approval of the item with staff's recommendation. And I'd like it to be brought back and re-agendized in sixty days, ninety days. What do you think?
If we could tentatively shoot for sixty days, and as we kinda peel back the onion, we may need to adjust that, but I would say sixty to ninety days.
How about a maximum of ninety days, we'll say, and if you can get it back earlier, come on back. So we'll say with a maximum of ninety days to come back and be reheared for being amended.
For, okay, for potential budget amendment?
Yes. So if anybody didn't get that, I move approval with staff's recommendation.
Second.
We do have the CIP presentation from Joe.
Unless the mayor or the council member would like to delay this, I'd be happy to do that, too, because we have a lot of stuff going on here.
That's fine.
Would you like to do it now?
Would you like to delay this presentation on CIP?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item eight point two, selection of the League of California Cities Twenty Seventeen Annual Conference Delegate and Alternate.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Tesari and councilmembers. The Twenty Seventeen League of California Cities Annual Conference is scheduled for Wednesday, September thirteenth through September fifteenth, twenty seventeen, in Sacramento. The League is requesting every city to designate a voting representative and up to two alternates who will represent the city at the business meeting. Staff's recommendation tonight is to appoint a member of the city council to serve as the city's delegate and up to two alternates at the League of California Cities Conference. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I would nominate Mayor Pro Tem Laramore to be our delegate.
Second that, and I would nominate, I know we have to do them separately, Mayor Tesari to be our alternate.
Councilman Rush, are you open to being a second alternate?
That's fine. I guess I have a procedural question. That, that's fine. I guess I have a procedural question. If three of us go, we have a council meeting scheduled for that night as well, right? The 13th? I'm not sure what the agenda is. Usually the first days, there's like a welcome, and I mean, it's pomp and circumstance, it's not anything necessary, so.
I would also like to add that the council is going dark in August, so that is the first meeting from returning dark.
Oh, great.
We would not have a quorum for that night.
So that's fine. I mean, if we could work something out where at least three of us could be here that Wednesday. Wait till Michelle gets done, sorry. Crystal Ball, is there anything that we would anticipate needing a four-fifths vote on, on the 13th? Probably haven't thought that far ahead, but, okay.
Take your word for it.
September. Okay. Then that's fine, and we can work out the logistics. I can be here Wednesday night.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Laramore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
We'll move on to 8.3, contract award for public storm drain project, Zone 2, project number 93019. Mr. Bradshaw?
City Council, we now have to bid on this contract. The funding actually comes from Riverside County Flood Control and the water distribution district previously by $2 million that are resolved to flood control area. This project entails about 70,000 linear feed to main line, storm drains, hopefully all avenue, Walter Avenue, and there's several elevators to facilitate, you know, paper, flooding areas in the city. One over near the high school, and also there's several elevators for anyone, and there's, and this project was bid out, we, we had three bidders, the range was point by point, like about 1.2 million. We were actually expecting many more bidders. Personally, I contacted about 15 potential bidders, several of the others, I personally, and everyone's extremely busy. This project, even substantially over engineers estimate, about 30% over engineers estimates. Number projects are having over engineer assessments right now. It's going to be interesting to see what the construction price index is, but for things that are related to development, housing tracks, commercial development, all those prices have jumped substantially the last few months. But we are, we're not seeing the base in bidding this project. We recommend to bid the most, most responsible bidder, EDH, Apple Valley Construction, with a base at 1.1 million plus 10% contingency and a, and a significant reduction.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions, if I may. Has this company done work in this region before that we know of?
I don't know. A lot of work in the desert.
I would assume so.
A big mare, I'm a, a former, former, so it may have.
Okay. Who did the engineer's estimate for the project?
That was, it was Anderson, and then I looked at the numbers, and the numbers seemed appropriate. I think it would have been appropriate six months ago. Now they're, they're low.
Is it materials costs? Because I'm hearing that materials costs are going up.
I'm sure part of this materials cost. Everybody I've talked to, they're saying, you know, they're saying 25, 30% increases in lighter, and material light is more than they would have suggested.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Plot? Out of, out of what funds are we using to pay for? Is it the Measure A or gas tax?
This is, this is only, it's, that comes from Flood Control District, that's a county that has a collect, specifically for this purpose.
Thank you.
There's about $2 million of, of, for this, for our, for our.
Got any public comments?
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Laramore?
Thank you, sir. Have we done any work with the, the second one in the list, Boudreaux Pipeline?
We've looked at that, but we, they are, they are closer, but the most responsible bidder is still, you know, we have, I, 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 but I think we will work with the most responsible bidder.
I'm sorry, another question. So what's the plan for our balance of the funds, $100,000 and change? We, we have 1.9 million allocated with contingency, we're...
1.1.
1.1. So what are we going to use the balance of the funds for?
The contingencies, fully for unforeseen items, usually that has to do with soils conditions, or utilities.
Yeah, I'm sorry, outside the contingency.
May I, may I answer the?
There's remaining funds, there's...
May I answer the question, Greg? May I answer the question, Councilman Rush? The $2 million is a not-to-exceed agreement for a variety of projects, and we have spent about $300,000 or so for Selby Avenue Stormbin, which was part of this funding.
Okay.
Okay, this was $300,000, and then this is expected to be like 1.3 by the end of the day with staffing and design. So I would say about 1.6, 1.7 thousand, a million dollars. So the balance is going to go back to the Zone 2, and we've been working very closely with Placotor District, and now we are seeking another funding for, from the Zone 2, to build the Hamler Avenue line from Sliceman Road all the way to Riverboat, on Hamler Avenue, from Sliceman to Riverboat.
And those are, those are ADP funds?
That's not ADP fund, it's going to co-op agreement through the maintenance project that they have.
So in your opinion, is this overage of about 30% going to be significantly cut into any future projects?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
That's my question. Does this show your thunder?
Close the public comments, since we don't have any. And I'll entertain a motion.
I would move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Laramore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, move on to item 8.4, extension of the contract services for code enforcement staff augmentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. This item is being brought to you based on the feedback from the Finance Committee to have their desire to have the city return to a two-person code enforcement model. If you recall, the last budget season, our second code enforcement officer position had been eliminated for, for budget, budget reasons. And, but mid-year, we had some unforeseen demands, increase in code enforcement that continue to exist today. And that's specific in part to maternity, tourism, grow houses, et cetera. You have a continuing growth in the city, yet we only have one budgeted position to cover 64,000 residents. Again, based on the recommendation of the Finance Committee, they wanted to have a second position built back into the budget for fiscal year 17, 18. The current situation is that our contract code enforcement services, supplemental services that council had authorized back in October of 2016, was extended again in April. It is, it is to expire on June 30th of, of this year. Should the council wish to move forward with the second code enforcement officer position, and our contract position terminates on June 30th, it's going to create a situation where we're back to one officer, and that's going to create a backlog of code enforcement issues and insufficient staffing to address the demand. So I am asking that pending adoption of the budget, that the council allow for an extension of the contract code enforcement services for a 90-day period, to allow for us to immediately start seeking applications. That does not mean that, that we have to actually fill, do a, a full recruitment and fill the position, should the council change their mind and not adopt a budget with a second code enforcement officer. However, we want to kind of get ahead of the curve and plan ahead, because I do not want to see a gap in services. This would allow us to, to continue the continuity of services and allow for a period of recruitment, should the council adopt a budget with a second code enforcement officer position. Should that not occur, then of course, the contract position would expire on June 30th, 2017.
Thank you. Any public?
None.
Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Laramore?
Aye.
Mayor Tesari?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
All right, move on to item nine, city managers and staff reports.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. As was stated previously, we are working on the statistics from the Sheriff's Department. We have been given several years of data, current year to date, as well as 15 and 16. That is being put into a spreadsheet that can be distributed to the public. It does take time to collect some of this data, so the Sheriff's Department is, I have made a request for additional years, but at this time, we are in possession of 15, 16, and year-to-date 17, and staff is putting together a spreadsheet. We'll add in the other years once that, that data becomes available. But I would like to bring that to the city council members for your review before it's distributed publicly.
I have a question on that, just real quick. Is that just going to be an annual information, or is it going to be an ongoing, like, monthly or quarterly, or?
It's going to be monthly, at the end of the month, right? Month, month close?
Yes, these are going to be the UCR reports that have been approved for release by the sheriff, and typically, they're a month behind, so I'll be releasing them to the city manager at the end of the month for the previous month.
Do we, do we know the content of what the, what's going to entail in the stats, the specifics or the details of them? Can we kind of like maybe to see that as well?
Yeah, we, well, we've asked for, based on, give me one moment. We asked for, obviously, statistics on homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, vehicle theft, arson. And then we did also request some specialty statistics for mailbox theft, loud parties.
I believe it's, uh, street racing.
Street racing, exactly. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Captain Hedge, there isn't a specific vehicle code, or a call-for-service code that goes with street racing. And this is why this is difficult for them to extract, because they have to actually go through a lot of calls for service that are under the umbrella of, what, reckless driving? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, as, as of right now, actually, in, in researching the street racing violations, we found that those are categorized in a broader violation of exceeding the speed limit, or reckless driving, or people driving too fast. We don't have a specific code for that. So I'm writing a proposal right now to the Sheriff's Department to have a specific Sheriff's Department identification for that crime, which hopefully will help us identify the problem, not only for Eastville, but throughout the county.
So that, that's, that's part of the reason that some of this data does take some time, because they have to actually go sift through all of those types of calls for service to determine which ones were actually specific to the, the request, which was street racing or mailbox theft, and there were, there were a few others. And so this data will be presented in a spreadsheet, month over month and year over year.
If I can just add, the, the way that I'm distributing it to the city manager is a spreadsheet, which is the only spreadsheet that was approved by the sheriff for release. And since I'm releasing it to the city manager, she can release it into any type of spreadsheet she, she would like. However, the information I'm providing was the only information that's approved from the sheriff for release, and in the format that's approved for release by the sheriff.
All right.
Does that make sense? So we will be putting it into a format based on a sample that was provided by Councilmember Rigby, and, and then council can sort of give, give us some feedback on the format before it's published publicly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney? All right, move to council comments. Mayor Protem?
Thank, thank you, sir. Last week, we had our policy committee meetings with the League of California Cities, Transportation, that one took place on Friday of last week, so it took a 5 o'clock flight to get up there for my committee meeting time, which means I had to get up by, at 3:00. It was pretty awesome. Got back at midnight, so it was a really long day. Anyway, in, in the committee meetings, there was a number of items discussed, but there was one piece of news that I found interesting, and that's in relation to Senate Bill 1 and the funding associated with that for the cities, that the cities will have to comply with audits and also submit information to the state in order to receive funding for road improvements within the community, and it has to be used, and you have to prove that in, I believe, the years 2011, 2012, and 2013, that you spent money in your city on road improvements. So I've already relayed this to the city manager earlier this evening. I want to make sure that the state isn't trying to do something funny with those specific years with the new cities, and maybe we can get in front of it. So there was that, also of discussion was Senate Bill 6, I believe it's 39 or 29, but that had to do with small cells, and putting those, what, what it would do, it would bypass city council, city councils across the state and have cell phone providers go and put up cell phone towers at will, small cell phone towers, attach them to our light poles throughout the city, or really wherever they like, and we have no recourse, and we will have to accept a monetary agreement reached on, by the state, basically, at $4,000 per unit. So the city of Eastville has already opposed this, but it sailed through the Senate, apparently, is now in the Assembly for a vote of concurrence or bringing, and apparently, the lobbyists on behalf of this have been at it for the past three years. So they've gotten a lot of their votes already lined up. So when, I understand that, who, who, one of you is going to be speaking with our Assemblywoman?
Yes, actually, Councilman Rush is going to be.
Okay, I, I have some information to pass along, when, when we do that. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Councilman Plot? Thank you. No, no comments for our, our take, except Todd will be filling in for me next week. I'll be out of town. One quick question, just wanted to get an update, Joe, if you can, be pleased for the Peach Blossom Road, and kind of somebody that, maybe if you have anything to share, if it's, bring up a next meeting, just kind of wanting an update on that.
Yes, Councilman Plot?
Yes, Councilman Plot, we have met with, as you are aware, we've met with two residents, Lieutenant Forbes and myself, and we reviewed their complaints and their requests on Peach Blossom. And Councilman, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Forbes ran the report for the past one year. And according to the report, there's only one reported accident during that period. I understand that, I was speaking to you, that there may be some other accidents or incidents that were not reported. So staff has reviewed these locations and we can, we are pleased to do more investigations and research and analyze the situation and come back with some kind of proposals or recommendations at next meeting. If that is, that pleases you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further comments.
Councilman Rigby?
Yes, thank you. The statistics were something that I was kind of pushing for, so I really appreciate you guys working together and getting those done. That's really appreciated. I had just a couple of things. One, just a reminder from Parks Commission. Next weekend is Picnic in the Park, biggest event in the city. So make sure that you're there. If you're not planning on being there, be there anyways. But also just be aware of the traffic that it's going to bring to the city also. And then, was there any update, Joe, on the fire station orchard? The progress that's happening there?
Yes, sir. Last week, we worked with developer in the area to get about eight loads of dirt. And what they did is they also voluntarily are helping us to remove five trees in the area that may be in the way of the garden club. And I'm working with Mr. Don Pattinger on all this effort. And he is very pleased to find out that we are able to level the hole, grade the site. And what we're waiting now, hopefully by tomorrow or Friday, we'll get some kind of a bid or proposal from three landscape contractors. What we're trying to do is we're trying to do at the main front yard of the fire station, we're trying to beautify that by using drought-tolerant plants, similar to at Fire Station Thirty-One. And during that work, we're going to have sprinkler across the driveway because some of the line have been chewed out by the rodents. So it's almost all gone now. So once that happens, we're going to lay a very simple irrigation and we're going to turn it over to Mr. Pattinger, who's going to start working on the orchard. There's some progress in that.
Thank you, and thank you for following up on that. It's interesting how little things like that bring the notoriety to the city from outside of the city, that people see little things and they get interested. I mean, as odd as it is, just a little orchard in front of a fire station, but how people outside of the city start to hear about that, news media starts to hear about that, stuff like that. So it's, little things make a big difference in our city.
We need healthy firefighters, sir, to protect the city.
The last thing that I had was just regarding the, I always butcher this name, the Short Term Rental Ad-Hoc Committee, I think is the name of it, the official name of it. We do have a tentative date. We were waiting on the HOA on some of the things that they were discussing in their recent HOA meeting. So we do have a tentative date of June twenty-first, subject to the availability of the HOA members. But we are continuing on that. We appreciate all that staff's doing, code enforcement, following up on all the information that they've been given on that. So we are moving forward with that still. We're just waiting on the HOA to confirm a specific date. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Rush?
Thank you. It's budget day, I guess, all day today. Our CTC today approved their one billion, with a B, dollar budget. First billion-dollar budget, I think, in the commission history. Most of that is associated with the ninety-one CIP project. For those of you who may have noticed, the towering inferno of K-rails on the fifteen, I inquired about that today. They're trying to get rid of them, sell them, get them out of there, so I'm working on that. I wanted to ask, and Kathy's here for Eric, I don't think we've done a, like, general plan report to the council. I think it's in our strategic plan. So I'd like to see an annual report, yeah, if we could put that, not immediate, but if we could put that on the list, long list of to-do items. My general interest is kind of where we are with respect to available parcels, what those parcels are general planned and zoned, where we're looking, or where we have zoning inconsistencies, kind of dovetailing it into our bottleneck study, I guess, if you want to call it that, and what opportunities there are from a public-private partnership-type perspective, rolling into economic development. So it doesn't have to be super fancy or super long. Super fancy, if you want to make it super fancy, that's fine. And then it's flag day, so happy flag day, everybody. And come out to the picnic in the park, should be hot.
Thank you, sir. Michelle?
My apologies, I didn't want to let you know the city will have a booth at Picnic in the Park. So city staff will be working. Please stop by and say hello. Also wanted to share with the council that the shopping center anchored by Smart and Final has announced that Smart and Final is planning their soft opening on August twenty-second and a grand opening on August twenty-third. And I'm working with the developer to, you know, have the city and Chamber of Commerce involved in those festivities. We have also requested through Goodman to do a grand opening for Volkswagen, Audi, and Porsche, Global Training Center, they're still in the middle of their tenant improvement right now. But they're looking at the end of July, early August. So I should have more details for you soon, but just kind of want to put that on your radar for now. Also, would like to advise the council and residents that Silver Lakes, which is not in the city of Eastvale, is holding their, a large, I know, many people think it's in the city of Eastvale, but it's not, across the street. They're having a large-scale event on July first. That's the weekend after Picnic in the Park. The preliminary details that we have been provided is that Eastvale Community Park will be closed starting on Monday, the Monday following Picnic in the Park. So what's that date, the twenty-eighth, I believe, twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth? So it's going to be closed for an undetermined amount of time at this point. Their estimates were sixty days, ninety days. This was brought up at the Parks Commission meeting last month, but I don't think they had actually given a hard date of closure. It is going to be Monday, the twenty-sixth, in order for them to do some rehabilitation on the fields at Eastvale Community Park. During that closure, they are going to be allowing Silver Lakes to utilize the parking at the Eastvale Community Park. So all eight hundred parking spots, in addition to parking at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. So their event at Silver Lakes will have some impact on the citizens of Eastvale. We, Sheriff's Department, Cal Fire, city staff, and Silver Lakes and Norco have been working together for several weeks now to look at their traffic control plan and mitigation measures. We're hoping to minimize the impact to Eastvale residents as much as possible, but I do want to advise the council, in case you start to get questions, comments. They are advertising their event on K-Frog. So it is going to be a large, a large-scale event. I think they're advertising it four times a day on K-Frog. So it will be a car show, a country music festival or country music concert, and a beer, beer festival, microbrew festival, something. So we're doing our best to mitigate and reduce any negative impact to Eastvale residents, but there's going to be some unavoidable impacts because that project is just across the street from our city. Oh, I'm sorry. Lastly, we will be doing an announcement through the city's website, kind of advising residents, hey, we've got Picnic in the Park coming up from JCSD. We've got this other event coming up from city of Norco. And so we're just going to start front-loading our residents with information about these events and potential impacts and maybe areas to avoid. And we will also be circulating some maps and information about Picnic in the Park specifically because they are going to be closing citrus, like we've done the last few years, and shuttling from Eleanor Roosevelt.
Councilman Rigby said we haven't gone on long enough. He has a question.
I'm sorry.
And my cookie's waiting, so I'm going to be quick.
Your cookie?
My cookie on my, not my, no. Just to clarify, at the Parks Commission meeting, it was not discussed that the park would be closed. It was not discussed. That was just, that just came up on us. JCSD did not let us know about that. During the Parks Commission meeting, they did discuss that they had a consultant that was looking at what they could do to the field, and that's as far as they got. That they were evaluating that and they said that what the consultant recommended was too expensive, that they were going to look at what they could do internally and they would bring that back to the commission. The other thing with that is, is I know staff is doing an excellent job right now, being brought up to speed on what's happening at Silver Lakes for this event. I don't know if there's anything, any kind of agreement we can get with the city of Norco, Silver Lakes, but that we can be brought in earlier. Because this has been very tough on the staff, our staff, and our staff has done an excellent job in being brought back up to speed, but I don't think it's fair to our staff nor our Sheriff's Department to be thrown, nor our school. I talked to Ted Rozzy the other day and the same day that Joe emailed him about their request to use the school, and he had no idea about it. So it's not fair to us as a city, being thrown with this stuff at the last minute when it impacts our city more than it does the city that it's actually in.
I would recommend possibly that we have staff draft a letter for our mayor to sign or all the council members to sign, indicating our concerns, something that comes directly from us. I mean, staff is doing a great job, but maybe we need to up the ante a little bit.
Bill them for the hours.
Or just, or just don't make our roads available.
Block them off.
Norco does it, Norco does it all the time. You look at Hidden Valley and where my mother-in-law lives over by Stagecoach Park, there's two K-rails right there on the border. No intrada, por favor.
One of the things I have expressed to JCSD, city of Norco, and Silver Lakes is that I would like to see a stakeholders' meeting. We're going to shoot for that after this event. I would like that meeting to include two elected officials from each agency so that we can openly discuss the issues and formulate a more collaborative and cooperative approach moving forward.
Like a standard operating procedure or something?
Correct.
From here on out, this is what we do.
Correct. That's my objective, is to kind of develop some sort of framework because this is not going to be the last large-scale event at Silver Lakes. So, and there, obviously, there's an economic development impact to both cities for having a facility like this, and I commend them, but there needs to be more cooperation and collaboration on the front end so that we're not caught flat-footed.
Vector Control will be out Friday, so prepare for the spray. My meeting, Public Safety meeting in Sacramento, we had a really small agenda, but one of the items that we voted twenty-two to seven to oppose was a state program to start a pilot program for clinics that are basically safe spaces for intravenous drug users. So they can bring their dope, they can go to the clinics, and they can get free injections provided by professionals with clean needles. They were all from the Bay Area.
I heard they're giving out free drugs as well.
That's the methadone clinic. That's where they go first. But, so anyway, we voted to oppose that. Hopefully, the executive committee will follow along. And we had a Ring Doorbell event at the Bootsma Ranch on Saturday. Hundreds of people, Councilman Rush, Councilman Rigby, they were out there. They saw the lines that went the whole way back to Schleisman.
And I installed it myself.
Awesome. But seventy-five thousand dollars worth of equipment they sold, so.
We heard they're not waterproof also, so be careful.
That's right. Do not spray your ring with your hose.
They're not waterproof either.
Your Ring Doorbell. But, yeah, any, every small step that every individuals or individuals in the city take, obviously, you know, to protect their own homes, helps the entire community, so. They also want to try and have a booth at the Picnic in the Park, so look for Ring out there. And Eastvale Kwanis is also going to be raffling off a Ring security system for five bucks a raffle ticket, and it's got about a six-hundred-dollar retail value, so. Look for me, I'll be selling them. And that's all I have. The next meeting is the twenty-eighth of June. Be there or be square. Meeting adjourned.